We're in open now? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we are moving down into section two, reports. And 2.1 is our citizen representatives appointed to committees, quasi judicial boards, external boards and societies. And we're going to need a resolution for each one of these councils. So first up is the policing committee. And the recommendations, I think, will appear on our screens. Do I have a resolution? I don't know if my screen's catching up with me. So on the, it's not showing up on my computer screen, but it's on the overheads, the names for the policing commission, policing committee. Are you having technology issues? Is it on your screen? Okay. It's just me. It says I'm just connecting.
Mover and seconder.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to go old school and give me a mover and a seconder by show of hands?
We have.
Oh, is it on the screen? Okay.
Just to be seated now.
Okay. It's not showing up for me, but that's okay. I'll pretend. I can't see who moved or seconded if you have. Oh, now I can. Counselor Brisbois, Counselor Goodwin. Any discussion? This is our first policing committee of this sort, so. Any estimation on when it will come together? We're waiting on the province, I think, for some members.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Manager Ferguson. Manager Ferguson is, looks after our municipal policing section and has been very instrumental in the creation and getting logistics set up for the policing committee. So over to Manager Ferguson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Congratulations to all of you on your election. I do look forward to supporting you over the next few years. So with respect to the policing committee, it is our intent to hold the first meeting the last week of November, providing all the nominees here are approved. And then for that meeting, the group will have to elect a chair, vice chair. And then there is an oath of office that will also have to be taken by all committee members. And as you noted, Counselor Curtis, once her security clearance has been approved, can then join the committee as well, so.
And the province was also appointing a few representatives. Do we know anything about them at this point, or?
Madam Mayor, no, at this point, no. As you're aware, the province does have the ability to appoint up to three committee members, but we have not heard anything from the province yet.
Great, thank you very much. Council, any further discussion or comments on that? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, please vote now. Call a question. I can't vote. I'm in favor. Nope, now I have it again. Everybody vote? And that's unanimous, council. Thank you very much. Moving now to Housing and Homelessness Integration Committee. Three appointments there. Having been on HHIC, Shannon Holtz has been with us in that capacity in the past, and so has Dwayne Croucher. Chris Cooman would be a new representative for the faith community, I believe. Thank you very much. Moved by Counselor Weinches, seconded by Counselor Tweedle. Any discussion? Counselor Weinches?
Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. Just on behalf of the committee, which was Counselor Hyam, who is no longer serving, but Counselor Barnstable and I, we want to express our appreciation to all the candidates who put their names in. Sometimes it makes it very hard for the nomination committee because there's a lot of great qualified applicants for our community who want to serve. And the good news is, the appointments that we're making today, and the good news is, there's still some vacancies. And so those will be reposted, and that's for Municipal Planning Commission, two vacancies; Mayor's Recognition Awards, two vacancies; Family and Community Support Services, one Indigenous representative; the Riverbend Golf and Recreation Society Board, one vacancy; and the Red Deer Tribunals, one vacancies. And those will be posted, and encouraging our community to, once again, put their names in. So thank you to all those in the community, and we look forward to working with you as council members on the committees. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. And again, everyone in favor, thanks very much, council. Move on to Municipal Planning Commission, please. Looking for a motion. When you get a chance. Moved by Counselor Curtis, seconded by Counselor Baruma. And we've got two citizen representatives being appointed there. Any comments from anyone? I haven't served on MPC for quite some time, so I'm not familiar with the people at the table. That will change. Thank you very much. Call the question. And again, that's unanimous, council. Thank you very much. Mayor's Recognition Awards, coming up next. I believe Counselor Weinches said there's still some, couple of vacancies there. Thank you, Counselor Weinches, Counselor Curtis. Any comments, questions there? For the new members of council, the Mayor's Recognition Awards, annual event, and used to be a committee of the mayor, and I'm not really sure who got together and came up with the award-winning candidates, but made it a little more formal and got a committee together, so it seems a little more community-oriented, so look forward to working, seeing their work, I guess. I don't know if I get to work with them. I'll see their work. Counselor Barnstable?
Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. I'll just kind of piggyback on to what Counselor Weinches was saying previously, sitting on the nomination committee. You do want to see a number of individuals run for these positions, and obviously, in an election year, the numbers do tend to dip a little bit. That's something we're used to seeing, so that's why we have a few more vacancies. There's just a lot going on within the city of Red Deer. But we're hopeful that some of these positions can be filled. And I know, I believe, one of the years, in the past four years, we called it the year of the, of the committee, or something like that. And we had.
Volunteer.
The volunteer, and there were so many applicants, and that's amazing. You want to have, to have strong committees, you'd have both quality and quantity in the applications. And so it's disappointing that we have a few spots vacant, but that's also opportunity within the community to step up. And if you see yourself being able to volunteer and put your name forward for some of these committees, it's always well entertained by the, by the nomination committee to work through those and to try and pick the best applicants. So there are some vacant spaces. Just wanted to echo what Counselor Weinches said. So make sure if you see yourself in one of these roles, to put your name forward. It is, it's great work that you can do within the community.
Thanks very much, Counselor Barnstable. It's also a great way to get to know people in your community in a different way, and a little bit about what's happening in the community. I think, coming out of COVID, we had a little bit of a lull in volunteer, people stepping up to volunteer for these kind of roles. And I think with the new council, just appointed, or sworn in this morning, that we'll see some excitement. People want to come forward, given the new council, and maybe during the campaign, we've piqued the interest of a few, so hopefully we'll see some response to that. Thank you very much. Counselor Baruma?
Thank you very much. I have appreciated the opportunities I've had on committees as part of my term. I do wonder at times, in terms of reviewing the committee structures that we have and the mandates that they do have, and if there are some other pressing issues that we have within our community that might be beneficial, having some committees taking a look at those particular pieces. I would use, for example, in regards to the Housing and Homeless Integration Committee, we've been working hard on that. Sometimes it's a challenge moving some of the priorities forward, so sometimes a refresh is there. The other thing is, is that in many ways, it's related to a lot of the work we're trying to achieve and do successfully with vulnerable housing, but we know there are other housing issues within our community. So maybe at an appropriate time, I would leave that with city manager and mayor, that we do take a look at the committees. And also, fresh off the election, I think there are some priorities out there that may benefit from broader community consultations and conversations. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Baruma. I think it came up in our orientation week. We may have caught it on the parking lot notes, that we might want to have a conversation at committee of the whole, on committees, and if there are pieces missing or pieces to review. Thank you very much. Seeing no one else in the queue, call the question. And that's also unanimous, council. 2.1E, it takes us to the Public Art Commission. See some familiar names in the artist community up there. It's good to see, as well as a few names I don't recognize, so that's also good. Any comments or questions? Moved by Counselor Brisbois, seconded by Counselor Tweedle. Prove the appointees. Seeing no one in the queue, no hands up. Thank you very much. We'll keep going. 2.1F, Red Deer and District Family and Community Support Services Board. Three appointees there. Thank you very much. Moved by Counselor Curtis, seconded by Counselor Tweedle. Any comments, questions? All good. Thank you very much. Are we going too fast? Just checking. 2.1G, Riverbend Golf and Recreation Society. I believe this is one where we do have a vacancy remaining. Encourage those who are golfers, or perhaps cross-country skiers, or disc golfers to take a look. Moved by Counselor Barnstable, seconded by Counselor Cron. Any comments? Call the question. Thank you very much, council. We'll move right along to the Library Board, 2.1H. Thank you very much. Moved by Counselor Tweedle, seconded by Counselor Curtis. Any, oh, and comments? Counselor Weinches?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a committee that was, a lot of applicants, so it was great to see the interest in the public library board. And just for the information of why you're seeing a number of the other board members, it's a criteria that's required for a letter to be sent to the provincial government regarding library funding. So that is why all the names are listed, rather, and plus the new members that are appointed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I was thinking, it's nice to see who's there, and. Thank you very much, Counselor Weinches. Any other comments? Oh, sorry. You'll miss the library board, yeah. It's a good one. Call the question, council. Speeding right along. Let's go to the Red Deer Regional Airport Authority Board. Moved by Counselor Baruma, seconded by Counselor Brisbois. Three appointees. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And then we'll move to item 2.2, Red Deer Downtown Business Association Board of Director One member, who I believe has been serving in this past year, to be appointed for a one-year term, a little bit more than a one-year term. Moved by Counselor Tweedle, seconded by Counselor Brisbois. Those two are busy today, doing all the lifting. Any comments or questions on that, council? Call the question. I want to take a moment just to thank our members of council who've served on the nomination committee. Counselor Weinches, Counselor Barnstable, and former Counselor Hyam appreciate the work that goes into making sure our committees are filled with top-notch candidates, and that they meet the criteria that each board needs. So thank you for your work, on behalf of all of us. Ratification of council member appointments is coming up next, council. Appreciate the work that staff went to, to help us place everyone in their, hopefully, everyone got some of their first picks and, in their choices, and appreciate the work in getting everybody into the, it's kind of like Tetris or something, getting everybody into the right spots. City Clerk, do you have comments on this?
Through the mayor, just to note for everyone, a correction on the appendix as presented. The Urban Aboriginal Voices Society has been renamed to the Urban Indigenous Voices Society, and that was updated in the appendix for your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. We have a mover, Counselor Weinches and Counselor Barnstable. And Counselor Barnstable, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. I'm just curious as to what the public sees on this behalf, because I know when we were given our appointments, it was in the closed agenda, and in the, in the open package, it just shows everything blank. And I just thought that the public might see something on the screen, but they don't. So is there a way that they see what, because I think some of the committees might be looking, there we are.
Right.
To know who's going to be coming and joining them, and they might be intrigued by that. So this is helpful for them to see that. Thank you.
Very good point. Yep. Is there a way for us as well to indicate pending approval for Counselor Curtis? Just for anyone that, I guess, we already have applications in for policing, so we're okay there. Might not need to be there for now. Counselor Curtis?
Checked in, and as soon as I pass my clearance, it'll actually show up an X.
Okay.
So I want to thank for the opportunity to serve on that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, counselor, council? City Clerk, you're okay? Moved by Counselor Weinches, seconded by Counselor Barnstable. I'll call the question, council. Playing a little bit of tag with Counselor Barnstable there, with his mic on and off. Not used to, I'm not used to seeing the view from up here. I can see what's happening a little bit. Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you, counselor, council, for your work in the coming year to serve on those committees and represent us. We look forward to hearing how, how that's going. Next item, 2.4, approval of council meeting dates for 2026. Page 15 of your agenda. Council, you'll note that there is a scheduled meeting for December 22nd. Might be one we want to think about. I don't know if there's concern about that. I think we do have the possibility of a public hearing coming forward on that day. Personally, I think that that's not a great day for a public hearing. I don't know if others have thoughts on that, but. Counselor Baruma?
I don't know if that would be done by way of. Meant to not have a meeting on December the 22nd?
Thank you. We also have an opportunity, I've just been reminded by the city clerk, to discuss this at the committee review, CARC, CARC coming up tomorrow? Tomorrow, next day? Next, tomorrow? So we could talk about rescheduling that meeting, or bumping, bumping the public hearing out further, potentially, and canceling that meeting. Can we amend it today, or that's not a possibility? Oh, sorry.
Through your worship to members of council, if council's considering changing or canceling the meeting of December 22nd of this year, is what I'm understanding.
Yep.
My recommendation would be, we discuss that at committee of the whole, and that a resolution to do so would come at your next regular council meeting.
November 20th.
The agenda before you with council meeting dates is for next year.
All right, okay. Yep, thank you. Maybe in my head, I've already moved to 2026, so, thank you. Counselor Weinches?
I just have a question in terms of the conversation that will take place at the committee review, and that is, because we're maybe subtracting a meeting, will there be a requirement for an additional meeting then? Like, I look at the calendar for January 5th. I know that's the, it's early in the new year, but having a meeting then, will that be something that will be discussed? I just don't want to lose momentum in terms of the work that needs to be done.
So through the mayor.
Yeah.
When it comes to scheduling meetings, council doesn't have to meet a minimum number of times in a year, so if you wanted to cancel that meeting, you can. The point where it starts to affect is how much we can get through, and then sometimes you may end up with some longer meetings. So oftentimes, if we were to not have a meeting, the following meeting or the one before becomes a much heavier agenda. And so if council's all right with that, then, then we can do that.
Thank you for those reminders, city manager. Counselor Barnstable?
Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. I was just wondering if administration could speak to moving it to a Tuesday. I know for some of the new faces in the room, that would just be something that would be a normal change, because they're not used to Mondays. I've become quite accustomed to the Mondays. I've had some personal issues with moving it to Tuesdays, but I understand there's good reasoning behind it, so maybe if administration can give some clarity and some clarification around why the suggestion, because I don't believe we ever talked about moving it to Tuesdays. So this is kind of, when it came up, it was not something that was on my radar, so I was a bit surprised when I saw it. So if we can maybe just have the reasoning behind it.
Thank you very much, city manager. We have had a little bit of discussion at some points in time.
So through the mayor, a lot of this came up when we had a number of council meetings that landed on a Monday that were a long weekend, and created quite a bit of concern for several council members in regards to having to work when they're supposed to be spending time with their families. And so was felt that if we're going to move some to Tuesdays, could we move all to Tuesdays? The other piece is around the time it takes us on all of our weekends to prepare on a Sunday to get ready for the Monday. And so from administration, there is some overtime that is done in getting ready for the next day, as well as it would give you an extra day with your council package. So this is why it was suggested, just to put it on the council floor for discussion, but it really is ultimately up to council as to what days your meetings are on, as well as what time they start at.
Thank you for that background information and understanding. I believe in our package, it lists a number of municipalities that are also on Tuesdays. Are there any that are still Mondays? I know of a few municipalities that are around our area that still meet on Mondays, and maybe just some clarification around that. I know that some of the bigger municipalities have tended to move to Tuesdays, but even just our region, whether we're meeting on a Monday or Tuesday. just our region, whether we're meeting on a Monday or Tuesday, I think that's kind of important to know as well.
I'll turn it over to the city clerk or Ms. Perkins, if they know of any Mondays in our region.
So, through the mayor and members of council, the research we did was in the agenda package. I can do a quick little research in terms of what's going on in our region. But the research we did was largely around municipalities our size or greater due to the complexity we find with the council agendas themselves. But if you give me a minute, I'll do a quick dive.
You read your county is Tuesdays.
And that's fair. I don't want to belabor that question, it's just more for understanding. And then, just my last question within this, I can't imagine that this needs to be a unanimous vote to move to this calendar in any stretch, but I'll have comments at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Baruma?
I'm just wondering, as we consider a Tuesday meeting, if we've aligned that with committees? I know, for example, Housing and Homeless Integration Committee, and there may be ability to move that, but they may also limit individuals who have other commitments on those days as well.
That's true. Yeah, thank you.
Through the mayor to council, that is something that we have considered, and we have had discussions with administrative teams around that move. We do understand that any change in schedule would have an impact on some people, and trying to give as much notice as possible, as this would only come into effect for 2026.
So, in recognizing that, are there other -- like, I know, for example, Housing and Homeless, do we have a number of other committees that are on Tuesdays? And that also takes resources from city staff, just in terms of that shift as well, so.
Through the mayor to council, yes, there are other committees that meet on a Tuesday. What we have done with the schedule for council committees is put them on different weeks from council week, so that there is no overlap.
Okay.
Okay, that's important to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I see, GM Perkins?
So, through the mayor and members of council, thanks to my colleagues, I do have an answer to Counselor Barnstable's question.
Go ahead, thank you.
You're very welcome. So, Blackfolds and Sylvan Lake meet on Tuesdays, La Colombe still on Mondays.
Thank you. Counselor Cron, thanks for your patience.
I do have a proposed amendment to the calendar, that we can do that now or when it seems appropriate?
I don't have a -- do I have a motion? No, I don't have a motion yet. Well, I do have -- I don't have the motion up. And we do have the motion on the floor now. Thanks to Counselor Brisbois and Counselor Cron. And you have an amendment you'd like to propose?
Yes, the amendment I'd like to propose is to move the August 11th date to September 1st. Recognizing that for council's summer break, we take one, two-week cycle off in the summer. This would move our summer break in the month of the month of August, rather than the back half of August and into September. Labor Day is actually on a funny weekend this year, because Labor Day is September 7th. And just knowing those last two weeks of August, people are sort of coming back and back to school, and the province starts doing announcements. So, it would make more sense to do our council summer break July 28th to September 1st, rather than August 11th to September 15th.
Thank you very much. So, we have a suggested change. Any comments or questions on that, counsel? We usually do have a break. Counselor Barnstable?
I just have a question on, if that's feasible with administration. I know that sometimes you have set these dates in there for a reason, as far as what you're expecting to come forward. That's a long ways away, so I can't imagine, but just maybe your comments on that.
So, through the mayor, we have no concerns with moving that meeting, or I guess removing August 11th. Not moving, removing. And that's fine with us. The farther out we can have these dates set, the better we can start scheduling items ahead of time. And last year, we got caught because we were trying to get everything finished prior to election.
Am I right, counsel and admin, in thinking that we normally have one meeting out of the summer that we skip? Yeah, we do. And that's not reflected in the order that we had proposed, correct? Doesn't look like we'd skipped one.
No, there is a skipped one.
Is there a skipped one?
The last weekend of August.
Oh, of August. Okay. So, you're bumping it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we have August off instead of August, September.
Any further discussion on that, counsel? Okay, we'll vote on the amendment.
I'll need a seconder, actually.
Oh, seconder?
Thank you.
There we go. Counselor Cron, Counselor Goodwin, thank you for catching me. Any other discussion? All those in favor, call the question. It's unanimous, counsel. Thank you very much. And we'll go back to the main motion, as amended. I appreciate catching that date early, so thank you. Now, I have a move by Counselor Cron and a seconded by Counselor Cron. You guys are really trying to mess me up. Thank you very much, Counselor Brisbois. Any further discussion on the proposed calendar for 2026? Call the question? Oh, sorry, Counselor Barnstable?
Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. Just for me personally, I don't want to try and take the whole team down. Mondays work for me. I've built my schedule around in my other life, around Mondays. So, that's why I made the comment about how Tuesdays is kind of a surprise to me, because that's going to shift some things drastically in my life. But I don't want to be someone that proposes back to Mondays if I'm the only one that needs to shift things around. So, I don't want to put an amendment in front of council to shift them back to Mondays. I would love to hear some other commentary, if there are none. Obviously, if no one turns their mics on and everyone's fine with Tuesdays, then I will be voting against it. But that's just where I'm at. The Mondays really worked well for myself, and I know a number of other people that usually, if they have other things going on in their world, things tend to start on Tuesdays. They usually have that open. And I know we have other council members that have other jobs and other realities within their world. So, I'd love to hear if there's an opportunity, if there are others that are interested in Monday, I can put that motion on the floor. I just don't want to do it and waste our time if I'm the only one that wants that change. So, just would love to hear from other counselors on this.
Thanks very much, Counselor Barnstable. I see Counselor Brisbois.
Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. For me, I'm indifferent. I just need to know a date. And so, if it works better to have it on Mondays for you, then I'm happy to oblige for that. I understand that, yeah, that goes into long weekends, weekends, but we also have the dates for long weekends, and we can ensure that the calendar does not hit those. I agree that in my other day job, that it's much busier on Tuesdays than it is on Mondays. So, happy to oblige to go back to Mondays if that's what's decided.
Thank you. If I remember last year correctly, we weren't able to miss long weekends ever. It seemed maybe we missed one. Counselor Wences?
I certainly recognize the concern as expressed by Counselor Barnstable, because sometimes people have set their year calendar. And so, when I looked at the proposed schedule, for me, I can go either, so it doesn't matter to me. But I think it -- was there any consideration of maybe thinking for the next year rather than this year, recognizing that there has been some complexities with calendars? But I'm at the will of my colleague counselors. I can go with either one. It's just important to me that we get started and do the work. Thank you.
Correct. Counselor Goodwin? Oh, sorry, Counselor Curtis, sorry.
I can appreciate the other comments and concerns. I can also appreciate that administration would be working many long weekends as well. I know for myself personally, Tuesdays would work better, just given my other day job, but that is me.
Thank you. City manager, do you have any comments on how Tuesdays might work better for staff than Mondays?
So, where I was, my face lit up, was in regards to Counselor Wences's option. And that is an option, if you wish to start the Tuesdays in 2027, that is an option, and then people can adjust their schedules. And so, that's where I wanted to chime in and say that is an option. As for Mondays versus Tuesdays, we'll make either work. It's just, it does take additional time to be ready and to go at 10:30 a.m. on a Monday.
So, we're requiring staff overtime or issues like that? Yep, okay. Thank you. It's to be considered. Counselor Barnstable?
Just a follow-up question. I know Counselor Hyam often voiced in the past term the ability to get our agendas to us earlier. I know that could solve some of the issues that we've had. We usually receive our agendas on a Thursday, and if it's heavier, sometimes a Friday, which is difficult over the weekend. If we were to stay with Mondays, is there any ability to get the agendas on Wednesdays? Or is that still something that, just within our work schedules? I know we've had this conversation a number of times, I don't want to reopen it, but just, I heard someone say that on a break, that maybe we can get the agendas earlier, and I know that hasn't happened. So, just maybe your comment on that.
I think it's important to kind of understand how far, when agenda prep starts, we've heard bits and pieces of that. But I'll go to city clerk and city manager for comments, or whoever.
So, this has been something we've tried to get out earlier for years, and it's been very difficult to change. And one of the pieces around the agenda cycle is, say, today's meeting is done, the agenda for tomorrow, or for next in two weeks, I review tomorrow. And that's when we make some of those last-minute changes. There's sometimes late reports that come in because there's an external application that maybe we're trying to get ahead to get on the agenda. So, there's a number of factors where we've tried to bring it earlier, but for many reasons, it seems to be that Thursday, Friday morning that where it sticks. But we'll continue to do that and get it out as soon as we can. But it has been difficult with the two-week turnaround to be able to get those agendas from finishing today to get the next one ready to go. And we're trying to get ahead of our planning from our corporate calendar, but there are always those last-minute things that are coming forward.
Tough one.
Thanks, Mayor Jeffries. I'll just say I'll be voting in opposition to this. I don't want to put forward an amendment to change all the dates to Mondays. I think that there might be a few counselors that would go along just for me, but I don't want to be the one that brings the whole team backwards, especially if it's more beneficial for administration. So, I'll be voting in opposition just because of my personal schedule, and I will make sure it works within that, that I'm not missing meetings or missing time. But I'll have to do some moving and shaking if this does get approved today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that understanding. Counselor Goodwin?
So, if it gets a no, then we go back and we'd make the proposal anyway? To me, if you just made the amendment, it would make sense.
Counselor Barnstable?
Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. This is the first meeting, so it's great. I know in the last council, if I put up the opportunity for everyone to make comments, everyone would make comments.
Yes.
But we've got a more efficient group here, it seems like.
Well, it might not be that easy.
Yeah. Rather than, if it gets voted and opposed, if that's what people are thinking about, then I will make an amendment to move the Tuesday dates to 2027 and stick with Monday dates for this upcoming year. And if that gets passed, then that would be appreciated by my council colleagues, they've already heard my concerns. So, I don't know how we catch that in a resolution, but--
I think we're working on it. And if--
Through the mayor, staff anticipated this may happen, and so--
So, they've got it in the--
Yeah.
Yeah. They knew us better than we did. And if somebody's prepared to second that when the opportunity comes up, that amendment. The more I look, the, you know, the slower it, having somebody watch you. Okay, well, we'll catch that. Good catch. That'd be the August 10th date being taken out. And were we catching the idea that we would move to Tuesdays in 2027 in this amendment? Moved by Counselor Barnstable, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Change the dates to Mondays for 2026, and I think we're going to capture the amendment made by Counselor Cron. Just can't see it. Is it good? Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion, councilors, council? Counselor Baruma?
I can support continuing with Mondays, but I would hope that in advance of our organizational meeting for 2027, we can have some conversations in regards to how that would best work.
To move to Tuesdays, or move--
Potential to move for Tuesday, but let's deal with that as part of prep for organizational meeting a year from now.
Counselor Cron?
I'm not going to support the amendment, just recognizing Counselor Barnstable's schedule and stuff, but I think the move to Tuesday is better for administration and for workflows and for everybody else not having to work through weekends. And so, if we do Mondays, I'm fine with that, but I'm not going to support the amendment.
Thank you very much. Counselor Curtis?
I second Chad there. When it comes to my other day job, that would mean I would have to possibly reschedule a meeting with over 40 people. So, that is pretty problematic in my other job there, so I won't support the amendment. If it ends up going through, then of course I'll be here, but it'll just create a little bit of a mess in my other position.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, counsel? Selfishly, I'm also going to vote against. No offense to you, Counselor Barnstable, just from a personal perspective, works better for me as well, but I could make both work, of course. Any further discussion, counsel? Oh, close. Kind of like the Blue Jays.
Too soon.
Too soon, too soon. Okay, thank you very much. So, we go back to the main motion? No, this isn't the amended version. We're still with the July date issue. Yeah. Is it good now? Magically, it's good. They told me when I became mayor that I got a magic wand, so I think I just used it. Seeing no one in the queue, any further discussion, counsel? Seeing no one in the queue, any further discussion, council? I'll call the question. Or Counselor Curtis? Sorry.
Uh, it may be correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much, council. Um, thanks for your understanding, Councilor Barnstable. And our last bit of business has to do with deputy mayor appointments for 2025, '26. Page 20. Okay. Oh, wait. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, before we move to 2.5
Oh, sorry. We have Jumped.
an, an additional amendment for 2.4, uh, resolution for 2.4 to consider.
Thank you. Having trouble following the dots on that one, apparently. Committee of the Whole dates. Um, there was some discussion in an email about trying to move the scheduled time. Well, Counselor Brisbois, if you wanted to speak to that or not, or it's resolved, maybe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would appreciate if we could even move this back a half hour, just to 1:30. Um, 2 o'clock would be preferable. That's just, I still work on Eastern time, so starting at a little bit later in the afternoon would be very helpful for me.
Okay. Other comments on that? I'll, I'll just say, uh, recognizing that 2 o'clock seems like an easy move, but that my experience at Committee of the Whole is that it has run longer than two hours, and I think two hours puts others into issues, uh, gets us past 4 o'clock. So, um, and I'll leave that to individual councilors to speak to. Um, but it, it has become a meeting that we are using, uh, and we would like to have a little bit of a roundtable session near the end. And my experience, the last couple is that it's been cut off, the roundtable piece has been cut off, and it might be one of the more important parts of the meeting. So, um, council, you can give the 1:30, 2 o'clock time change or proposed change a thought, but it is a little bit of a challenge. Also possible, Counselor Brisbois, for you to come in a little bit late, I think, if need be. And it's only 10 days, right, of the year? So, yeah. Any other comments? Did you want to try an amendment, Counselor Brisbois, or leave it as is? Okay. Everyone's good. Uh, Counselor Curtis and Counselor Goodwin have moved and seconded proposed dates. Any other comments? Call the question. We can move on to deputy mayor appointments, where I was trying to be a couple minutes ago. Counselor Weinschies, Counselor Goodwin, thank you very much. Any discussion? Changes? Nope. Call the question. Thank you very much. That's passed unanimously. Thank you very much, City Clerk, for your work on getting all of that put together for us. And now we can close the meeting. Pardon?
Motion to adjourn now. That's what I was hoping for. Ooh, who do I pick? There's new people. Um, Counselor Goodwin, Counselor Cron. Counselor Cron likes to close meetings. Thank you very much, council. We adjourned. Need to vote? I was just
All in favor? Very much. Thank you. Thanks very much, council. Thanks very much, counsel. Congratulations.